Okay, it's February 19th, 2014, and 5:10 called a meeting to order. And adjustments to the agenda, are there any adjustments? Audience and communications, I'd just like to take a moment and mention a couple of things. We have a few CSSU board members who this is their last CSSU board meeting, and we'd like to thank you for that. And Lisa Falcone, you're here.
Six years on the board, six years.
Thank you for leaving.
Thank you for service.
Oh, no, 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 thank you for serving. And I'm sure-
I was gonna say, "Thank you." That's my last one.
I'm sure we'll continue to hear your voice, and we hope that we do. And Adora Fraser, also, thank you very much for your service, and we hope to see you back in, back on the board when you get a chance again. So, thank you so much. And Kelly Bones not here, but she's also retiring from the board.
No.
No. She, no.
Okay.
Excuse me, retiring from clerkship.
Okay.
Choosing not to do the clerk, excuse me, thank you. I'm glad we're still gonna have her around.
And can I just jump in on this one?
Yeah, please.
So Susan Holson, who is on the CVU board, is also stepping down. She's done a three-year term, part of the bigger family, I think it's important to recognize. And I want to recognize the people who have been of service, in service, to CSSU for 10 years or more. Some serve on this board, some do not, but still, 10 years of service to the community, to the kids, I think deserves recognition. Clyde Baldwin, Charlotte, 23 years. 23 years' service to the students of Chittanen South. Lorna Jimmerson, 21 years. Joan Lennis, 21 years. Colleen McKinnon, 19 years. And Jean Jensen, 13 years. I think that is incredibly extraordinary and deserves-
(applause)
Thank you all. Amazing.
A lot of water under the bridge.
That's a lot of years, a lot of years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd also like to have a moment to acknowledge Elaine's recognition that she's received from the national level of Superintendent's Association. So Elaine attended the American, what is it, the American Association of-
School administrators.
School administrators last week, and was recognized for her honor last year of being Vermont Superintendent of the Year. And we'd also like to have Joan inform us about some other recognition. Would you like to help us with that?
I do. Elaine, on behalf of the state reps in your school districts, a resolution is being, is written and will be framing, don't start.[200.65][200.65](laughter) Joan, will be framed and given to you, but I just thought, as we transition, I wanted to-
It's really nice.
-be able to read it, and it's a House concurrent resolution congratulating Elaine Pinkney on her being named the 2013 Frederick H. Tuttle Superintendent of the Year, offered by la la. And we put the three senators from Williston and two from Heinsburg on. Whereas each year, the Vermont Superintendent's Association honors a superintendent as the Frederick H. Tuttle Superintendent of the Year, and whereas this award is named in memory of a former South Burlington superintendent whose career exemplified his emplory, record of public educational service, and whereas the criteria for the award are outstanding education leader at the local, regional, and state levels, and a commitment to public education and children of Vermont, and whereas, after careful consideration, the VSA selected Chittanen South Supervisory Union Superintendent Elaine Pinkney as the 2013 Frederick H. Tuttle Superintendent of the Year, and whereas, she is a gifted administrator who inspires others to lead and always works with the best interests of students as her primary concern, and whereas Elaine Pinkney began her career as an elementary and middle school teacher and then principal, and whereas, before assuming her current position in 2006, Elaine Pinkney was the Vermont Deputy Commissioner of Education, and whereas Elaine Pinkney-
Is 83 years old.[316.12][316.12](laughter)
She'll kill you if we know how to do it.[321.12][321.12](laughter) Elaine Pinkney has shown a deep commitment to the students in her supervisory union's communities and to raising the quality of elementary and secondary education in Vermont, and whereas, in pursuit of that goal, Elaine Pinkney co-chaired a work group focusing on educational quality, and whereas Elaine Pinkney has been a prime advocate for adopting a modern school calendar that promotes a better learning process.[350.12][350.12](laughter) Whereas, her professional colleagues have recognized her leadership skills, selecting her as the current VSA Vice President and as the Vermont representative to the governing board of the American Association of School Administrators. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives, that the General Assembly congratulates Elaine Pinkney on her being named the 2013 Frederick H. Tuttle Superintendent of the Year, and be it further resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Elaine Pinkney.[391.12][391.12](applause)
Thank you all. I give service to you. I work in the very best supervisory union with people who are, every, every one of the whereas's, you know, that talk about attributes about caring about kids, true of all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine.
And that's going to be framed and sent to you.
But the embossed, the-
The real one.
With all the whereas's.
I just wanted Joan to know, as of our-
But that's amazing.
...standards, that would be considered a run-on sentence.[420.31][420.31](laughter)
Well-
I want to know how come they found out so much of it.
Don't ask me to do math if you think that whereas.[428.12][428.12](laughter)
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
I also would like to thank the CSSU board for the really beautiful flowers that arrived at my desk yesterday from all of you. I'm imagining one of the little elves around this table on the back on the other half. Thank you very much.
Joan makes us all look good.[446.24][446.24](laughter) Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other audience and communications? Okay. Hard to top that one, that was pretty good.
Really?
So, we're at 4.0 presentations, we have Mike Borven, Mr. Mike Borven with us to give us a presentation and have a Q and A about our risk management. So, Mike, it's all yours.
I'm listening, Mike. Whereas, I'm the one who broke in and missed it.[491.12][491.12](laughter) You may wonder why Mike is here. Your policy E5 requires that you review your risk management program annually. So those of you who keep score, just check the box on paragraph five of E5 for renewal. You do this annually. Mike is with Mike Borven and provides the excellent service to bring it all together, the plan that covers what risks we have in the SU, in a fiscally prudent manner for all of our schools. So we asked him to kind of walk through the portfolio and answer any questions you might have on how he does his work. Go on.
And I think Bob handed out a summary of the coverages, and we won't get into too much detail. I want to leave a little time at the end for you to ask questions, or ask questions as we go through this, but we won't get into anywhere near the detail. The detail that Bob and Cindy and I go through when we go through this renewal every year, it's about 35 pages, so we've cut that down to about three. So there's a lot more detail, a lot more meat to this, and I'd be glad to ask any questions. But this is just a 10,000-foot overview of the insurance. It's property, casualty, liability, workers' comp. We're not addressing health insurance, you'll be glad to know tonight. But it's all your other insurance. Just to give you an idea of what we did this year, and one of the questions I know came up last year is just the whole putting out the insurance to bid, and how do we come up with the insurance company that we choose? Every year, Bob and I and Cindy, we start this process in about April 1st, so we're coming up with it another month, and we fill out applications with different insurance companies, and we go through these different building replacement costs to make sure we're properly insuring the buildings. We fill out apps with the numbers of students at each school, the sporting events. It's a pretty involved process that we go through every year, and it's something we certainly take serious, and it's, it is, it's a big, it's a big job for us. So, this year, we went out to bid, and we had Peerless, Hanover, Travelers, Hartford, AmTrust quoting on it, as well as Visbit. They also provided a quote on all of the insurance, and we narrowed it down and we recommended Peerless, which is Liberty Mutual, they're owned by Liberty Mutual, on everything other than the workers' comp, and AmTrust on the workers' comp. And there was a variety of reasons why we narrowed it down to those two, but certainly fiscally responsible, economically, that was certainly something we were looking at as well. And Liberty Mutual, who handles everything other than the workers' comp, is a much more hand-on loss prevention type of organizations, so I'm sure you're hearing from some of the property managers, Bob and I were just talking about that at the school district, they're, they're being asked more questions, and more inspections are being done of the school, but it's all great. It's recommendations, it's the playgrounds, it's employees up on the roof checking out the HVAC to make sure they're compliant with OSHA. It's been a six-month process of going through, and they did, each of these insurance, not all of them, but many of them come out and do inspections of the school too, so that takes time. But they all come back with different recommendations which are very helpful as Bob and I go through this, and then Bob filters it out to the different schools, that this is really what we're gonna focus on and prioritize this year on loss prevention, safety orientation. So that gives you an idea of how the process worked and where we got to where we are today. And then this summary, and again, I'll go through this briefly, but the first part is the property coverage. We have a blanket coverage of $134 million at all the schools, that's your total property replacement cost. We have flood coverage, we have earthquake coverage. Earthquake is one area that we did increase this year. I think we had $5 million the year before, we bumped that up to $10 million for any one earthquake that we have. And then we list, obviously, the property in the schools there. We then get onto crime coverage, and this is, you read a lot about this in the paper, blanket employee disloyalty, it's when an employee or official or a board member, anyone with access to cash steals money, checks, makes fictitious vendors that are writing checks out to. Actually, this coverage is provided for the school district. And you can see we have some excess employee disloyalties, coverage on those employees that obviously have the most access to cash in the school district. I don't know if there's any specific questions I noticed that we just talked about.
CSSU office covered as well, or is it just the schools?
It's the CSSU might as well, the schools, yes.[815.12][815.12](applause) All right, the next page, we get into the liability coverages. So this is, the first part is general liability, which is bodily injury, this is when a student is hurt, the school district gets sued, gets sued, that's the most likely situation, the general liability comes into place. And as you see, the each occurrence limit, so any one lawsuit, we have a million dollars, and then as we go to the next page, there's a $10 million umbrella on top of that. So for any one lawsuit that this, that school or the school district is subject to, it's a total of $11 million that we have to protect the school for any one lawsuit. The next section, we call it educators' legal liability, that's protecting the board and your decisions that you make. It's also employment practice liability, which is down below. So if this school district gets sued, and discrimination in the workplace, hiring, firing, terminating, not promoting, or anything that happens within the workplace, if the school district gets sued, we have a million dollar coverage there, and that umbrella goes on top of that as well. So that's, again, $11 million for any one lawsuit that we have. All right, the last page, we have the auto coverage, this covers all the buses, it covers the paraprofessionals, when they're driving their own vehicle and an accident occurs, and if school district gets sued, it's covering teachers on the way to a meeting, if they get into an accident, it's protecting, again, the school district if they get brought into a suit, which would probably be the case if they, if they're driving on behalf of the school district. So again, we have $11 million for that. Then we get into workers' comp, and this is probably the most, it is the most expensive part of the insurance. It's about 60% of your premium, and it's why we focus so much attention on it in terms of the claims, the safety, the management of claims. And I put a grid here that just gives you an idea of the losses that have occurred every year. You can see it's, it's definitely trended positively, which has really helped us when we went out to bid last year, is why we got the number of quotes that we were able to get this year, is because the workers' comp has definitely improved over the last three to four years. If you go back to '08, '09, you can see there was like, you know, five, over 500,000 workers' comp claims, and that's, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of dollars for insurance company to pay out when your premiums, 300,000. So you can see there, it's not an attractive, it's not an attractive candidate when insurance companies are getting expense. We've really been working on that, trying to manage this, this process, and any, any attention and emphasis you can provide on this, we appreciate it, but the schools, the schools really have done a much better job in trying to put the salt down, you'll see it out there, it slips and falls at this time of year, as you all know, it's a big, a big exposure for the schools. But our experience mod, which is a reflection of our past experiences, down to 1.70, which is fantastic. I mean, that's 30% lower than it was three years ago. So we literally, our premiums on our workers' comp are down 30% from where they were, that's big dollars. So it's so worth the time that we're putting into this to save that kind of money. And then the last part is just this excess liability that we talked about, $10 million, so that goes over these coverages down below. That's how we get to $11 million of coverage for any one lawsuit that we have. So that's pretty much my summary of coverages. I don't know if there's any other questions?
So does the, the excess doesn't cover personal injury?
Uh, bodily injury.
理 injury?
Yeah, it does. That's what commercial general liability is.
Oh, commercial, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, exactly.
Can you refresh my memory about what the cost of this, all these coverages were?
Yeah, it is, I wish, it's about, my memory is about 540,000, 520, 540,000, right in that range. Again, workers' comp is 315,000 of that amount, a big part of it.
Yeah, I think the three big categories would be the workman's comp, hands down, and then the property and auto liability or auto insurance. We've got a large, large fleet of cars.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Since we only get one opportunity to do this, Colleen, can I take two minutes to emphasize some things Mike said?
Yes.
The, the workman's comp is the biggest focus of our efforts, it's the largest dollars. Your, your group has a, a well-understood approach to managing workman's comp at the moment an accident occurs in the facility, to the point where they, we send them to get care appropriately, under the workman's comp umbrella. It is not the process that we had in place 10 or 15 years ago, and Mike and I first got together with this work when we were unable to find anybody interested in taking workman's comp on behalf of CSSU, and that has changed dramatically. The other thing, I'll emphasize something Mike mentioned, is we have changed carriers, and if you bump into the facilities guys in each of your schools, they're probably not going to express thrill with, with that change, because they're much more engaged with the insurance company, they're answering a whole slew more questions, and some of you have parts of your facility that are now called into question relative to need for repair and maintenance. And that's all the result of kind of a change in character, which he and I celebrate, facilities guys like that. And then lastly, you emphasizing again something Mike mentioned, Visbit is out there offering a multi-line pool for schools in Vermont. We look at it every two or three years, depending on how much pain I want to go through with Tammy, because she has to fill in the whole application to get Visbit, to get us a quote back, just to keep an eye on what they're offering and whether it's the right place for you all to be relative to insurance. So far, it has not been, but we continue to look at that on a two-year, three-year basis. And, yes?
Can you go back to the facilities and just remind us of how that happens? Is it like a random site inspection or?
Actually, the new carrier was more than random, the new carrier wanted to physically get on the ground and see every building that's under the umbrella. So some of your buildings saw an audit or an insurance carrier for the first time in a number of years. And his review was exhaustive, he did playgrounds as well at CVU, he wandered out and saw the ropes course in the woods back there. So it was, it was far more extensive than what we've seen in the past.
But it's not a surprise visit? It was scheduled?
No, no, it's-
Yeah, it's not a-
He sets it up and invites himself in and spends the day with Tim, Kurt, David, David, or Kermit.[1299.12][1299.12](laughter)
It's not like a regulator that shows up and sees whether you're following regulations?
No, he issues a report for our benefit after he gets done. It's important we react to that, but no, he's not, he's part of the organization, not external.
Yeah, it's great having another set of eyes of this is, this is other schools, other states, they just, they've seen it all, so they, they know where claims have been heard, so it's good, always good to have a third set of eyes, take a look at something like this.
Well, with all of our budgets pinched for maintenance and upkeep and so forth, it's kind of a big process to have in place. Helps us.
Yeah.
Are there other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're at 5.0 reports to the board, and 5.1, the hopefully, we continue to-
So I hope that you noticed in the backup report that on Monday, after school vacation, Monday before Town Meeting Day, that the, in service, that all of the teachers in Chittanen South K8 will be in Williston doing work on the Common Core and collaborative teams, and I invite, Molly invites all of you, if you would like to come and kind of observe that, I would be happy to be a tour guide for you. So I think, Molly, you're going to be sending out an invitation, maybe?
I could do that.
Or Kathy, or somebody.[1399.82][1399.82](laughter)
This is your invitation. I'd be happy to.
You'll get a reminder, either from me or Molly. It is a really interesting thing to do. I, I find it really interesting every time I do the little walkabout, and you could come for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever, I'll take you through some of the rooms, and you can see the really good work that's going on. So, if you have that time and you'd like to do that, I would be happy to.
So remind us again of the date, time?
It's Monday, March 3rd, starting at-
I think the best time to be there would be 1:30 to 2:30, though of course, anytime's fine. But that's going to be particularly for our ELA teams, a shareout among those collaborative teams that have been designing units aligned with the Common Core. They'll be sharing them with one another and talking about what worked, what didn't work. That might be a particularly great time to be.
So, so it's not just random, we'll do some kind of sign-up related to that?
Or I'll just walk you through, I mean, I usually just walk in and out. They're, they're in clusters, so it's easy to see a lot of teachers by going through, like, one of the houses in Williston, you're going to see four different groups of teachers in one area, so it makes it really easy.
Elaine?
Yeah.
So if we were to come at a different time than 1:30 to 2:30, we should let you know, so you know to meet us and then walk us through.
Exactly.
All right.
Related to that, I hope you took time to read Molly's lengthy Common Core implementation plan and where we are with that, because I think it's a really good review of where we've been, where we're going. Megan, maybe you could say something about, remember when we were in budget process last December, we learned that we were severing ties with our outside partner, well, they severed ties with us, actually, is the right way to say it, for CISEI, the Children Integrated Services Group? And we said then, because we were just learning about it at the time, that we'd come back and give a report about how we were handling that, so.
Yep. So some of this is in your, is in your report, so you can read sort of more detail about the changes, but the quick summary is that last year, Part C, which are the special education rules governing birth-to-three services, changed significantly and changed, shifted responsibility, that responsibilities that were previously ours as school systems shifted to our partner agency, or what was our partner agency, Children's Integrated Services for the intervention. And as Elaine said, they shared with us pretty late in the, in the process, that they didn't desire to continue the partnership for next year. So our positions, our birth-to-three special educator positions won't exist next year, they will, they will, we don't have that responsibility anymore. What is in here is, we still have some responsibility for some screening and some childfind activities, so making sure that families know how to access services, and we also have a responsibility to transition students who are children, who are moving into triple E services, so three-to-five-year-old special education services. And what we will be doing is shaping a position, a single 1.0 FTE position, to facilitate that transition, maintain a partnership with CIS to the extent that we can, because we have a vested interest in knowing who the kids are and transitioning them effectively. And this position will also, this will be a triple E position, so the focus will be on three-to-five-year-olds. So they will also provide some services to students who, for example, turn three in the middle of the year and need to have an alternative way of accessing services. So at the end of the day, the 1.9 positions will be, will be reduced and replaced with a 1.0 early childhood special ed position. Happy to answer questions or anything like that?
Is this a good change for us?
This, CSSU and I would say others in our region was, we were very proud of that, this partnership. We were providing services that were very high-quality, we had lots of advance notice of kids coming into our system, transitions were, were seamless, and I think we got a lot of benefit from that, and we were not anticipating CIS ending the partnership. So I think, though, that this position that we're creating will fill some needs in three-to-five, will help us ensure that we have a continuum of environments to provide services in, and I think this will be a, a good position for us. We will miss our connection to birth-to-three services.
I think Megan's being very opportunistic about this, and figuring out that, okay, here's how this is working, how can we now do some things that we wouldn't, we weren't able to do before, in a better way? And yes, I agree with Miss that we don't have that connection, but it's really going to strengthen that, the other pieces that she spoke about.
So where is the funding coming for that 1.0 position, since we do have those positions in the budget?
Well, you're, it's essentially a net 0.9 reduction in what's currently in the budget, because 1.9 FTE was in, is in your budget as of this moment, and we will only be filling 1.0 of that next year.
And as far as the revenue goes?
There's no revenue, and there's no revenue for triple E services either. The special ed revenue is for six to 21, ages six to 21. So that, that wasn't an issue before and isn't an issue now.
So it's not a net, it's not a revenue loss at the same time that it's a budget reduction?
No, correct.
Okay. Are there questions from Megan?
So one of the things that I want to point out, I know you've all heard this, and I'm going to keep bringing it back probably every meeting, the legislation that passed last year around personalized learning plans, I think there's like a little piece in here about that, that's going to keep coming around. And there is one level of responsibility for our seventh and eighth graders on- And there is one level of responsibility for our seventh and eighth graders, um, in terms of developing a process and a plan and figuring out the structure of this. And there's a whole other thing at the high school level in terms of the dual enrollment piece of this and what that might mean in terms of planning out and budgetary implications. So just kind of like a heads up, personalized learning plans, you're going to be hearing that a lot, can imagine that at the retreat in June, we'll be talking about that and what our plan is for rolling that out. And lastly, we have need for additional ELL support that will come to the board next month, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that it was going to be there. And I haven't spoken with the school that's going to be impacted, but I will before next month, so that no surprise. We continue to get more ELL kids. It's, um, okay? That's it?
Okay. Five point two, second quarter financial management report. Bob?
The report is in your packet. I'm willing to answer any questions you might have on my additional lows for January.
Are there questions for Bob?
Can I make two corrections to your report? CBU should be capitalized C, DU in paragraph three. And the yield on the Part Two program was left over from last quarter. The actual favorable performance for Part Two at the moment is only $1,172, not as I reported at the bottom of your page. If you'd update those two, that would be great.
So the estimate at year-end is to be, where it says 1590, supposed to be what?
Yeah. 1172, comma, favorable.
1172 favorable. Questions for Bob? Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sometimes it's nice to have no questions. Okay, we're at six point O discussion matters. Six point one, Act 153, 156 is, part of Act 153, 156 is realignment of our special education staffing. And Elaine?
I, I will start, and then if there are any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Megan. So we are poised this year to move all the staffing over to central office as, you know, determined by 153, 156. We're in compliance with that part of the law. Last year, when we were having conversations about how we would do the assessments, we believed that we could choose any way to assess, including figuring out what everybody spent and then just billing back. Meg, Megan and I attended several meetings over the summer that caused us to get together and say, hey, are you hearing what I'm hearing? And what we were both hearing was, there isn't an option to do that. And in fact, the board has some options it can consider, but if the board doesn't choose one of those options that it can consider, then it defaults to ADM. So we have a process going with the board chairs. First, just to let them, let them know, here's really what the intention of the law is. Then having a discussion about modeling out what these other possibilities are. So the other possibilities, in addition to ADM, are child count and equalized pupil. And so the board chairs, at the, at their last meeting, saw all of those numbers. You'll see all of those numbers at your next meeting. Then the board chairs will have a big discussion, then you'll have a big discussion. And by June, the retreat, we need to make a decision about how we will do the financing of that. So, and it can't be by billback. It has to be by ADM, equalized pupil, or child count. Anything you want to add to that, Megan?
That covers it.
Let me see if I can get this straightened. So we have three choices. And the one that we had preferred is just not going to be with that.
Well, the one that we had preferred was like saying, okay, we're going to move all of the staff over there, but we're going to be status quo on how we manage the books.
How, how we pay.
So we, so we're holding seven different books. And actually, you know, Megan can speak to this better than I can, but that kind of like ties your hands in terms of any efficiencies or creativity in terms of doing the, the shared services. It really defeats the purposes of the law. So I don't think that they're going to come and levy a fine on us because we're doing that for this year, but we do need to make a decision going forward.
So when you say child count or ADM or equalized pupils, is that child count of?
Special ed students.
Special ed students.
So one of the things that, you go ahead.
I was going to say, we, we were treating it like transportation, where, you know, it was built back based on usage. And what, you know, instead of doing it that way, it's essentially going to be formula-driven, pick your formula. And it's going to take the total, you know, spent by all of CSSU in special ed and, you know, driven by some formula based on one of these three measures is going to drive that back to each of the school's budget. As a practical matter, at least, given the, you know, the, given the way we're billing it back now and some of these formulas, in the first year, there will be winners and losers, as far as some schools will have a, you know, a bigger budget item for it than they would under the current formula. And, you know, there will be schools that are apparent winners, where they'll actually, you know, see that fine item in the budget decrease. But it's one of those things that, you know, my understanding is that can shift from year to year, depending on, you know, who, who you have in, in your system and who is, you know, moving on to CBU or moves out of town and that sort of thing. And I guess these counts don't, you know, whether it's ADM or the other thing, they don't rate it for, you know, degree of difficulty, for lack of a better way of describing it, or, you know, the, the level of services.
That's up to moderating.
No, it's not, it's not like they're weighted numbers based on, you know, the level of needs. So, you know, like I say, it, it will, in, in the first year, it will, you know, pinch some budgets, it will relieve others. I think once we're into it, then it's just going to, you know, build on whatever it is, but it's not, it's not something we've got a big choice in. We just need to find the method that will.
So the offsetting state support, the revenue that's associated with special ed, then we'll go to CSSU and then we divvy the out probably from there.
My understanding of part of, part of discussion that happened at the board chairs level was to try to share, invite some questions early so that when it's presented to full boarding, gets shared across all the, all the boards, is that where you have a little more information. But there's a, there's a concern about having things leveled out for the districts in budget-wise, so maybe a couple-year transition, maybe not. I'm, I'm just, I'm getting ahead of the game right now by saying that, but that's one of the concerns, is that there's some leveling of budget change over time, you know, maybe a two-year transition, for example. And then also connecting somewhat to other formulas that we use within the SCU for other services. It's a difference.
So to that point, some of the things that we've been asked to do is look at, what are the advantages of each, advantages, disadvantages of each, of using any one of those methodologies? And what are other people doing? And why have they chosen what they've chosen? So we will be prepared to do that and explain that the next time we visit with you.
So that our time together is more efficient.
Will that be a topic of the retreat?
March.
March, okay.
March, for you to see the information. So here's what it looks like if we do ADM, here's what it looks like if we do equalized pupil, here's what it looks like if we do child count, here's our assessment of pros and cons. But just, you're just looking at it, not a huge, big discussion. April, huge, big discussion. You've had time to look at the numbers, to hear the pros and cons, to think about it yourself, and then at the June retreat, take a vote. So you'll have plenty of time to absorb, you know, what this is and hear our thinking about it.
Are there other elements of that that we should be discussing now? Is that good? Thank you. Okay, six point two, budget fiscal year 2015 summary.
That is just there for information, to be able to see where everybody is. I think you all should be proud of the work that you did in budgeting this year. You know, all the budgets are under 3.32 percent increase. Obviously, the corresponding tax rate is much higher than that, but people did really good work, I believe, in the budget process.
Well, and when we, you, everyone got the Picas report in your packet as well, and when you look at the budget increases in a wider region, I think we're right on track with everybody else. Heinsberg with increasing ADM and increasing headcount in the community, and we're still holding our budget steady. So. Comments on that? Ready to move? Seven point O, action matters. We have a request to pick a retreat date, and administration is recommending Friday, May 30th, and the second option is, I believe it's the Monday.
May, June 2nd.
June 2nd. So Friday, you want us to take an action right now? Is there a motion? Does anyone want to make a motion in yet? Who's got the quickest calendar out?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that'd be on May 30th.
Friday?
So second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Retreat for Monday, I'm sorry, Friday, May 30th?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And Elaine, I'm sure we'll hear more next month or the month after related to planning for the retreat.
Yes.
And questions that we want, might want to bring.
Yep.
Forward and, and have a use of that time. And I'm assuming that all of the boards are going to be meeting that same day?
That is the plan.
Including CBU?
Including CBU. And that will be a, it's on all your agendas tonight to discuss, so that is the plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Seven point two, we need to have a motion to approve banking services contract. And the motion would be, Bob, can you help us with a?
The motion would be to approve a contract for five years for banking services with People's United Bank, Burlington, Vermont.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So.
In a second?
Second.
And all those, further discussion? Questions?
Call it, I need to review this all.
Okay. Um, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention?
Two.
Two, three?
Well, not me.
Yeah, two. Okay, great. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we're at eight point O, consent agenda, and need a motion to approve this consent agenda as presented.
So.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. And we are at nine point O, we need to confirm our next meeting dates. It has here, our regular board meeting, March 12th, and just a reminder that our local boards meet first so that local boards can do their reorganization and elect the representatives for the CSSU board, and then the CSSU board will meet at 7:00. So we have 5:30, it's a later start time for everyone instead of the 5:00. And also, just for our CSSU board, just a reminder that tomorrow night, 5:30, is our annual meeting with Elaine. It's a meeting that happens in executive session. It's part of her annual performance review, and that's central office, 5:30. Okay, and we're at the common topic, and 10 point O, and super, I think we're doing okay on time. It's going to be a little bit shorter for you, but common topic is supervision and evaluation. And in the past, board members have wanted to have a better understanding of the process of supervision and evaluation. And Greg, I think you're helping us with that?
And Jackie, Greg and Jackie are doing the presentation.
Thank you. And Greg and Jackie, we're just going to go around and introduce ourselves again as board members, just because you may be familiar with some of us, not all of us. So Eric, you want to start?
Kristen Reicher-Hot.
Lorna Jimerson, CBU.
Lisa Falconi, Heinsberg.
Colleen McKinnon, Heinsberg.
Kathy Stockman, Shelburne.
Joan Leno, CBU.
So it's all yours, and I'm sorry, we're going to, our, our timing, we've cut you a little bit short.
Maybe you should have them say what's the.
Yes, yes, I assume that they will introduce themselves.
So, so thank you. I'm Jackie Parks, the building principal from Williston.
I'm Greg Moreno, elementary co-principal at Charlotte.
And we're going to attempt to give you a broad stroke overview of supervision and evaluation. I mean, it's, it's a big topic, so it's really going to be scratching the surface, but, and we know some of you were here when we had one in the past, and some people are brand-new to it. So we'll do our best, but feel free to follow up with questions if we run out of time. So really, some initial thoughts as I thought about supervision and evaluation and, and what to say, was really, it comes down, it's really about student learning. It's about teachers be, developing their practice with the help of their administrator, and then that translates into improved student learning. So that's really what it's all about. You know, we have to use, or teachers have to use those effective research-based practices in their classroom. There's a really big body of research out there now about what is effective in teaching. And part of any good supervision and evaluation system looks at those common practices that can be applied across settings, and that's really what we need to use and what teachers need to use with students. You know, effective teaching translates into increased learning. I mean, the teacher is the number one factor in learning. That's been proven over and over, so. And the big point, I think, we're going to, to hit on here, supervision's ongoing, and it includes both a formal and an informal process. It really permeates everything we do as school administrators every day. So the CSSU system is based on the work of Charlotte Danielson, which is one of the people that have pulled together this body of research. There's other models out there. There's research for better teaching, there's a model by John Marshall, there's the Marzano model, but they all take that same foundation of research-based teaching and just put their kind of spin on it. So the one that actually most of Vermont uses, CSSU included, is the work of Charlotte Danielson. And this work really reflects all the teacher responsibilities that teachers have for promoting student learning. So in this Danielson model, we look at four domains of teaching. The first one is planning and preparation, which is planning those curriculum units, like Molly was talking about right now. We're planning curriculum units based on the new Common Core and melding those together and preparing for individual classes. Domain two is the classroom environment. So if you think about discipline, how the, how the room is set up, what the culture's like, those are the types of things you'd find in classroom environment. Domain three is the instructional domain, where you really look at what are those activities and assignments that we're using to engage students? How are we assessing them? And that's all in domain three. And then the fourth domain is that broader professional responsibilities category, which includes grading and communicating with parents, keeping up on professional development, ensuring success for all students. So those are the four domains when we formally evaluate teachers that they're familiar with and that we use. So there's a lot of different pieces to it. New teachers to education. If a teacher's brand-new to education, they're assigned a teacher mentor who's been trained in the Danielson framework, and that mentor works with them for two years. They meet weekly, the mentor observes and gives feedback. I mean, it's a, it's, it gets to be a very deep and rich relationship. That training's been updated in recent years and, you know, it's really, it's a great system. I mean, it's good for new teachers. A new teacher is also formally observed by the administrator at least twice a year. Formally means a pre-conference, an observation, and a post-conference. So the pre-conference, they're coming with their lesson plan, you're asking questions about, you know, what the instructions looks like, how does this class fit into the whole unit of instruction, you know, how, you know, how is, what is instruction going to look like? The observation really- The observation really varies. I mean, some thirty minutes to two hours I've done, I mean, it just really varies on what the teacher's teaching responsibilities are. And then a post-conference, which is between the observation and the post-conference, that rubric that I talked about with those domains, the teacher self-assesses themselves based on the notes that their administrator has left them, as well as their own reflection and their student work that the students produced. And then the principal self-scores a different route, the same rubric, but individually. And you get together and you're comparing and talking through what that looks like. Because ultimately, we want teachers to reflect on their practice and grow. We're sort of there as a, you know, check and balance to help that conversation along. But that's what the formal looks like. And then there's a category, if they're just new to school teachers, so maybe they've taught five years somewhere else, but they still are assigned one of those trained mentors. It might only be one year in this case, depending on the level of experience the teacher has, but it could also be two. And they're still formally observed twice a year for the first two years, following that model I just talked about. So all teachers, they write and they work on focused goals that are based off of the Danielson rubric. And those come out of their summative evaluation. So we have the classroom observations, and then we have the holistic summative looking at their, the collective body of their practice for a four-year period. And so at the end of that summative, you come up with strengths and areas to focus on, and those focused areas become their goals that they're working with. In addition, they're formally observed at least every four years, formally being that formal process, and they're holistically evaluated through the summative at least every four years during that time. So one of the questions I anticipated is why every four years? And just to kind of give you a sense, and every school's very, very different, so I just, I used Williston, but, you know, a formal observation process takes a minimum of four hours. And for a new principal, it probably takes closer to six or seven to get through that whole process and do the write-up and meet with the teacher and do the observation. And then the summative process, which happens in that same year but later, takes at least three hours. Every school's different, but I counted today, so I have fifty-seven professional staff that I directly supervise, which is fourteen formal observations and summatives per year, or about sixteen days of work each year. So to give you that sort of big broader picture, and then you have, of course, support staff you're supervising, and office staff you're supervising, so there's a lot of components to it. So that's partially why the formal is in every four year. But, we'll keep going, and you'll hear the rest of the story in a minute. Just one other thing to note is there also are intensive plans. So if their, if a teacher's performance is not where it should be after going through supervision and evaluation, then we move to what's called an intensive plan of supervision. That's very individualized and very targeted to whatever area needs improvement. And there's dates and goals and measurable results related to that. So how else do we ensure student learning? I mean, teachers' active participation in meetings is critical, because we don't have the old just announcement meetings anymore. Really, every meeting time we have, teachers are collaborating together in some way around student learning. We review student data with teachers at data team meetings and at EST meetings. So we're looking at all those local assessment results with them to see who's making progress, who isn't, why not. So those conversations are a big part of supervision and evaluation. Walking through classrooms regularly, and Greg's going to jump in on that in just a minute. Tier-two interventions, intervention work with students. So class, tier-one instruction is classroom-level instruction. Some students need another layer on top of that, and we call that tier-two instruction. And teachers, part of a teacher's responsibility is to help design and carry that out. Regular professional development for teachers, which we do a ton of, and observing how they collaborate with other professionals. So the more they're collabora- collaborating on lesson plans, on instruction in the classroom, on those interventions, those are all indicators of supervision and evaluation that we use. So Greg's going to talk about walk-throughs.
Actually, yeah. So a little bit of a shifting gears here. Everything you heard Jackie just talk about pretty much systematized throughout the SU. We're shifting here into walk-throughs, which is really just something that we're beginning to explore and work with, and is really in a different place than every, than every one of the local schools. So there's lots of buzz in the education field currently around the positive impact of school walk-throughs. Variety of walk-through models being implemented around the country. These varying structure, frequency, and focus, so what the various look-for's may be. So some immediate gains that we've noticed at Charlotte Central School around starting up walk-throughs, and that's an opportunity definitely to be more aware of and connected with with day-to-day instruction walks-off. So what are the experiences that the teacher and the students are feeling? What does it look like, what does it sound like in the classrooms? More in a regular, real-time, day-to-day way. More real-time formative data about the learning culture and instructional habits that are actually taking hold in classrooms. That's another opportunity to gather data about effective instruction, productive learning, and the impact of professional development. So what we've found is when you have more real-time information and knowledge about instruction in classrooms, including real-time information about how students and teachers are interacting with that, interacting with that instruction, it really leads to richer conversations with teachers. When you can more frequently bump into a teacher and say, whoa, couldn't believe when I saw Johnny make that connection, and it was really powerful, and that's a real indicator to that work we've been doing around discourse. So the more touches on the ball, it seems, that we have of experiencing those moments in classrooms, the more opportunities we have to have those rich moments with teachers. That comes up, we've found, also in conversations around student support. In those EST meetings, we call, we have kid talk meetings at Charlotte. When you're at the table talking about particular students' challenges and strengths, and there are more people at the table who have seen it in action, it's a real great leverage for movement in conversation. It increases, frankly, I think it increases my credibility with a teacher when I can speak to things that I've observed firsthand. And it helps build knowledge and relationship with individual students. The more they see the instructional leaders in their classrooms with them, watching them do their learning, I think the better. So here's the piece that I was referring to earlier. It's definitely a local culture and a context piece to consider here. And it's important to acknowledge that there are local elements at each of our SU schools that create unique backdrops. We're building the culture on purpose around the walk-throughs. Today, I'm really just speaking about the status of walk-throughs at Charlotte, and some components that have helped us get started. We feel like we're really at the beginning of a journey, and we're kind of ready to make next steps. It's just a quote, give you a minute to read that, from a book. It's a good resource, it's called Engaging Teachers in Classroom Walk-throughs. Basically, just indicating that what, the book really brings to life a lot of different formats for walk-throughs, but what it comes down to is that the more, the more you can, the more you can really design that walk-through to meet the needs, obviously, of your local, your local system, the better. So some first steps we took in Charlotte, say, really a year and a half ago, is we made a commitment to the time, and I say we, I'm talking about Audrey, my colleague Audrey Buthok, the middle-level co-principal, and I. And we blocked the weekly time in our calendar and attempted to hold it as untouchable. This is definitely one of the most challenging things, to put that time in the calendar. And then, one of the strategies we had was to agree that let's make some of those blocks common. So you and I are doing walk-throughs at the same time on Tuesdays every week, because very often, we find that we're the ones that pulling from each other, each other's time. Like, Audrey, you and I need to talk, but if we have walk-throughs at the same time, we're less likely to pull and compete on that time. So that's one strategy we've used. Currently this year, I've got three hours blocked in my calendar a week. And it's tough to get three hours in, but I do what I can. And I have some rules around that, and that is, sum is better than all. So if I find that the hour, the sixty minutes, not going to happen, but I can get thirty to happen, I'll do thirty. Or if it's just not going to happen today, I'll just grab that on my Google Calendar and try to slide it over to the next day, so I'm not losing the hour. And that's, that's going to be a continuous battle, but we're trying to really keep true to those blocks. And hold true to the routines, create systems that work for tracking and documenting business. So some basics about walk-throughs at CCS. Generally, they're seven to fifteen minutes in length. They're not scheduled in advance of the teacher. Notes are taken and shared via email. Audrey and I do that a little bit differently. I'll share a little bit about how I do it using a tool called Notability. And we use the prompts when we take notes, I notice, and I wonder. So just essentially, things, noticing's in the classroom of evidence of the work that we're doing around professional development, things that are popping from the classroom walls, things that teachers are saying, things that students are saying. Sometimes I'll write the prompt, "teacher talk," and just quote some things I hear the teacher say. Sometimes I'll write "student talk" and quote some things I heard the students say. So just a little bit about the Notability app that I wanted to show you here. And it's just one tool that we're using at CCS, and I'm finding it really useful in me. It allows photos, print, handwriting, and audio to be all easily integrated into one document. And this document is emailed to the teacher at the end of the walk-through. And it helps to organize notes in a useful way. I'll show you a little bit of that in a minute. So I'm going to see if I can get the air server to work here. Give me a second to see if the technology will cooperate. There it is, great. So I'm just going to open up Notability now. I'm going to show a couple notes. I want you to know that the notes I'm showing, I've spoken to each of these, all of these teachers, and they were absolutely fine with me sharing these notes. So just really quickly, you'll see, over here, there are just folders with teachers' names, and it keeps track of how many notes are in different folders, which is a helpful tool for me. If I open a full, a teacher's folder, let's find one. So very often, one of the first things I'll do when I walk into a classroom is just kind of step in and scope out the entire room, and sometimes just snap a picture of the entire room. And I think the pictures, that's one of the reasons I really like this tool, because literally, the pictures can tell an amazing story in themselves. This was just early in the year, a class already really rocking and rolling with Independent Readers Workshop. And the picture, being able to take the picture and watching all the students immersed in independent reading. And then, a little lower on the page, over here, you can see this teacher conferencing with a student. It's, it would take a long time to sort of put all that and do it justice in words, but to be able to quickly snap pictures, I can tap on a picture and resize it. Real simple, I'm resizing the document. resize the picture, I can tap there and add a caption. Sometimes the captions are my favorite place to write notes. And of course, I can type into the document or scribble on it with my finger or stylus. And then before I leave the room, I can send the whole document to the teacher, which I do. I send it via email. There's also a little microphone button here. And if I am having a conversation with a student or a teacher is saying something, I can hit that microphone button, and it'll take audio. Then when I email the note to the teacher, it'll send a separate little audio file to the teacher. So it's just a nice way to give quick feedback, very easy tool to use. I think the app costs two bucks. So it's just a great way to be able to use the iPad to assist me with classroom walk-throughs. Just another more recent walk-through. Happened to be in the classroom, didn't expect this to be the case. The kids were finishing up snack. Then we started, we started implementing a mobile lab, mobile computer cart lab with the fourth grade this year. We got some donated laptops we were able to retrofit to work on our system. And the kids were finishing up snack, and two fourth graders rolled in the cart. And I got to watch, I got to watch the teacher gather the kids at the rug, talk about the writing assignment they've been working on, frame up the lesson around their persuasive letters, move over to the cart. There's the cart before it was, before the kids got their computers. And then in a matter of three or four minutes, watch the kids get the carts out, ask for the teacher's routine, log in and begin typing their, their persuasive letters. I asked, was able to ask one student, I won't play the audio here because it won't do it justice, but I did look at a little audio clip of a student's reaction to what he thinks. Because these kids, writing in the classroom on computers is a new phenomenon. So I asked a child, you know, how he likes writing on the computer, and his response was, he really liked it because it helped him, it helped his work look neater, and it helped him spell words that he has trouble spelling. So that was just an interesting thing that I thought was worth recording and worth having the teacher hear. So that's, that's the Notability app. And again, it's a lot of different ways to record information. And that's just one that we found to be useful. And Jack, do you want to say a few words about walk-throughs in Williston? Yeah, let me turn this off. I should do it. I'll minimize that.
Got it. So, I mean, the great thing about walk-throughs is that there's no one right way to do it. It really comes down to, I think, the administrator's style, the culture of the building, and then, of course, how you give that feedback. And all of us, thanks to our best practice work in math, I believe, are really focusing in on the I notice and I wonder statements. The noticing usually, as Greg said, is around an initiative or something that we've worked on collectively as a staff, something we want to acknowledge and see more of. And the I wonder are just true wonderings about either a specific student or a specific practice a teacher has. And they're really intended, hopefully, just to promote reflection and dialogue. When I do walk-throughs, seven to twelve minutes in a classroom, it's really amazing in a short amount of time how much you can get. Sometimes I go in and I do one and I don't write anything up. It wasn't that there was anything, it wasn't anything going wrong, or it just wasn't anything that I really wanted to spend time pointing out and saying, you know, this was great. I use, well, I've played around with a few different formats. The one I use the most is I take the four Danielson domains and just make a four quadrant grid. I have an I notice and I wonder place in each of them. And then whatever I see, I can tie to either planning and preparation, classroom environment, instruction, or professional responsibilities. So I really look a lot at the evidence that our professional development is translating into classroom practice, since we're so committed to the work that we're doing in all these areas. And in Williston, we have, you know, we have math as everyone else does, literacy as everything everyone else does, and we also have a lot of science work going on. And so I'm looking for those best practices in those areas. I write something up, and then within twenty-four hours, I have a quick face-to-face feedback format. So, and I really have grown into that over the years. I used to put it in people's boxes or email it, and sometimes I do email it, but I always follow up with a quick one-on-one conversation, you know, even if it's just two minutes to point out or notice something. And usually, the teacher wants to talk more about their practice, which is great. So that's what walk-throughs in Williston look like right now. Yeah, so I think we're going to open it up for questions and do our best to answer them for you. Yes?
Does parent feedback factor into teacher evaluations at all?
In, in, parent feedback in the summatives, so when you're looking holistically at a teacher's practice, that would be one piece of evidence that you would bring into the process.
Have any of your schools been engaged in, teachers engaging in walk-throughs, peer walk-throughs?
Not that I'm aware of, but the focus of this book is really on that. It's just on that, and really need to build the culture around it first, and then. That's a great goal because it gets teachers to really collaborating with peers and reflect on practice. and reflect on practice.
Yeah, I think our math work is the closest we are to that right now in terms of doing, you know, going into studio classrooms as a group and observing instruction in practice. Yes. Yes?
In terms of students, are they responding to you differently because they see you more or you're not, you're not a distant figure you're writing in the classroom? What's the kids' reactions?
I would definitely, I would definitely say that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, they're used to it. I mean, the work, the professional development work we're doing has adults in classrooms a lot. So kids are really not phased. I mean, they're happy to talk with you, they're fine if I just come in and watch, if I chat with them. I mean, they're pretty, yeah, I mean, they're pretty used to it at this point, which I think is great.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm just curious, and you may not be able to get through this, but how it works at CBU.
It's the same system at CBU. So they also use the Danielson program. I think that they've adjusted it a little bit. I know Karina is sitting here in the audience. It is the same.
We use the same.
And I know that they are also piloting some walk-throughs.
Yeah, walk-throughs, I think, just schedule-wise are much better at the high school level. Like, we are encouraged to just go to other, which is, it's just a different environment.
Yeah, so for the principals, the principals meet this year once a month for the whole day. And for the, for two of those months, the focus of the professional development work was around supervision and evaluation and sharing walk-through.
So along those same lines, do you go to each other's schools and do walk-throughs together?
We haven't done that at this point. I mean, that's more the instructional rounds idea, which is another whole sort of arm of this. And the purpose is different. Usually, you're trying to, you know, either look holistically at impact of instruction or you're trying to grow the instructional expertise of the leaders. So it has a little different twist on it. But that's out there right now, too, and gaining popularity.
Well, that's something that Secretary Holcomb has mentioned a number of times, is the rounds piece, like a red metal?
Yeah, instructional rounds.
Where people go to another school and give you feedback.
Well, I just want to say, I think it's amazing, I don't think there's a lot of professions where you'd be so scrutinized. I mean, it's totally what's best for our kids. So just thank you for all of our teachers and administrators for being so on board with it. Because it's got to be somewhat uncomfortable some of the time, but...
I think it is, but I think the more that we really take on that growth mindset of for kids and for adults, like that we're always growing, we're always trying to improve our practice and what we do, no matter what our role is. And, you know, as we, as that culture continues to grow, I think it's, it gets easier and easier.
Kevin, did you? Audience members, you're welcome to engage in the conversation as well. Did anyone have anything you wanted to ask or comment on?
How do you find time to do all this?
Biggest challenge on this one? You just have to make it a priority is the bottom line. I mean, you have to, my goal is five walk-throughs a week where I have to write them up and to the group, I write them up, write something and give face-to-face feedback. Some weeks I do more than that, some weeks less, but that's the average I'm assuming for, but it's hard because there's so much to the job and this is just like one little slice of it.
I just, I don't mean to be mean or nasty or cynical, but my wife has taught for 27 years and been observed twice. I taught for 10 years and, you know, again, I think maybe twice I had an adult in my classroom, so I just, I'm worried how you manage to fit all that in.
Hopefully, that's not happening.
Kelly?
Hi, I'm wondering, too, as the culture changes, is it, is the observation less, is it being viewed more positively by the person being observed, less as a scrutinizing visit? I wonder, is that, do you have a sense of the feeling of...
You mean the formal observation process?
No, just the walk-through, like coming through, you say you do three a day. Is that like, oh, she's going to be in my class today? Or is it, wow, this would be great, another set of eyes on my work, let's, we could talk about it? I wonder.
Yeah. Part of my plan this year is, I have a little survey at the end of the year that I'm going to give to teachers and kind of ask some of those questions. It's part of what I wrote into my goals. So I think time will tell, but I think the more it's the common practice, the less of a big deal it's going to be.
And I think part of that, too, is it's so dependent on the person.
Sure.
And it's a professional disposition that we want to grow and that we want to mod. That, I mean, as a principal, I can get better every day. As, no matter what we do in education, we're expecting that we're going to be better tomorrow than we are today. So we just kind of, we want to grow that disposition across our system, so.
It's a practice, right?
Exactly.
To adopt.
Reflection is a habit in the practice.
Are there questions?
Along the lines of you're going to send out a survey to these teachers, is there any other way that they get feedback to you about how you are evaluating them and whether or not they feel that was a fair evaluation at that particular time, on that particular day or whatever? How would they, how are they able to respond to you?
Well, we, what do we call it in...
We're calling it the Administrator Feedback Survey.
Administrative Feedback Survey.
Just so people know what it is.
All the administrators have, you know, do those each year with teachers. So that's an anonymous way. I mean, I could just speak to when, after a formal observation in particular, just, usually at the end of the dialogue, teachers are really, I mean, what I hear is like, that was a great conversation, thank you, I liked hearing about it, or I liked, you know, the dialogue that we had. So, I don't know, I mean, there's one that's sort of anonymous and just the one, just by conversation, I don't know if you get any.
Well, definitely in the post-observation conference, when you're having the conversations about, huh, let's look at that evidence and see where, what sentences in which rubric box we're talking about and why. And then at the end, just this year, I started asking, tell me about how this process was for you, just right after the formal observation, and then what might have made it better. So that's, you know, just an echo and stuff.
How are you measuring the effectiveness, the student learning that's going on? Obviously, you have best practices in mind. What kind of measures are you using for effectiveness? Given that we're such a data crazy society?
I mean, I don't, you know, it's so interconnected, everything we're doing in terms of professional development, supervision and evaluation, structuring, you know, data meetings and EST meetings, our faculty meetings. I don't know how you would tease out how, what the impact of one of those are, but I think holistically, you know, we get our NEPA scores, we just, we just got them, we look at what's the impact been. But then we have to think about, I think, the system as a whole. I don't know how you'd ever tease out just one little piece of that. Even when we talk about kids and we, like, they're a kid that maybe has extra instruction, which we would call tier two, usually they're getting some during the, during the school year and some during the summer, and it's hard to even tease out which one of those was the one that worked, or was it the combination of them that worked? So I, that's a hard one. I don't know how you'd pull one thing out.
But I think it's a good thing that we're looking at multiple.
Right. Go.
Do you guys have like a five-year plan or something like going forward, like they are looking to go in this or...
Relative to the whole supervision and evaluation process?
No, just this one, the walk-through. There was some discussion about peer, teachers, students, communities. Has there been discussion about, you know, because I think it's a great idea, but I think even the teacher part, it would be even more interesting, yeah, as a way of collaborating between, I don't know, if you had a plan, you know, if it was just you're going to try it and see how it goes or...
Sure.
So we do have a supervision and evaluation committee that, right now, the administrators on the committee have just been meeting informally to talk about how do we meld some of these together in a way that makes sense. Nothing definitive at this point. I mean, this, the walk-through piece is really in sort of its infancy stages, but there is interest in how do we take all of this and stick with Danielson, but craft a way to incorporate more of it.
Good question. So do you ever find it difficult to go through this process and, you know, appreciate which teachers are excelling or otherwise, and just sort of how that matches up with eventual staffing configuration after a reduction force, for example?
Well, I think reductions and force are always, are always challenging. You always hate to lose good people.
So after all the work and effort and time that you put into this process, do you, are you able, obviously, to get the outcomes you want, given that, you know, all your evaluations don't bear on what your staffing...
Can I, can I take that? So we don't link teacher effectiveness in the classroom in terms of student outcomes with RIFs. That's a totally different thing.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So they, seems like a lot of work for something...
So, on the other hand, the supervision and evaluation process that we use, the system that we use certainly can ferret out teachers that might be in need of coaching out or in need of non-renewal. You know, that's how you would do that. But not, but not through a RIF. We wouldn't use RIF to do that. We would do that through the formal supervision and evaluation process. And then it wouldn't be a rank ordering, it would just be, you're not meeting the needs of our students based on, here's the evidence. And bring some evidence yourself if you have some that you think contradicts.
Kelly?
So just to clarify, if this falls under evaluation, is the spirit of these walk-throughs really sort of constructive criticism if needed? It's information gathering for you and how to best use your resources. It's not, you're not going with a clipboard, chup, 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 chup. So that's not the mentality, the spirit of the walk-throughs at all.
It's just, it's to observe and give feedback on the instructional process and have dialogues with teachers. Because really, I mean, the more questions we can ask that ask teachers to reflect on their practice, which there's so little time to do for all of us. Sure. The more practice improves, it's just, it's human nature. I mean, sometimes talking something through or you get an idea and get a spark of something else to try. So it's really in that spirit, so.
And I think the piece around improving your own level of expertise and real-time knowledge of what's happening in the classroom is incredibly helpful because, as you said, you can not have enough time for this. But if you're going from meeting to meeting to meeting to meeting and not really seeing where the rubber hits the road and touching base every four years, it doesn't feel like I have a lot of credibility to talk to someone about their practice.
Cindy wants to.
I just want to add that it's not just constructive criticism, they're also using them for kudos, which is something we also don't take time to get, helping just that they're doing well.
Right, right. Well, that's what the "I notice" is about, actually. Yeah, sure.
So how about we have one or two more questions, comments? And if we move early into our executive session, I think that would benefit our board because of our discussion. So other questions, comments? Jackie and Greg, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very impressive work. Need a motion to go into executive session for negotiations and personnel, please? In a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move.